At least start, okay. Good evening, sorry for the technical interruption, but we had to get online again. We were okay to begin with. This is the August 18th, 2020 meeting of the Seward Planning and Zoning Commission, not a meeting, work session, and we are discussing communication towers tonight in an ordinance change. And we had started by just saying that we've had other meetings on this, other public hearing or work sessions, and the comp plan has information on it. And staff has prepared us a draft ordinance, and then we have public comments, and we have AT&amp;T and Verizon on the line, and they have submitted their suggestions to the ordinance. And we were just getting into the public comments that were submitted that wanted to be read, so we're gonna start over with those, and we were hardly into it, so Jackie, if you'll read the one text we've received?
Yes, this is from Skip Ryerson, who's unable to attend due to COVID. He supports the proposed tower regulations set forth by, or put forth by the P&amp;Z Commission tonight for the work session. He does believe the AT&amp;T changes are technically worth adopting as it pertains to federal regulations. He does not support towers in R1 through R3 as they have requested. If in five to 10 years, space or locations are exhausted, can they, they can then request a change.
Okay. And the second email that we received was Mary Beth Koster. I am writing to express concerns about cell towers being built in Seward. Research I've done shows health risks for those living within 150 meters of cell towers. I'm also concerned about the visual intrusion on the historic and cultural resources of downtown Seward. I welcome your response to this email, thank you for your attention to my concerns. And then the third email we received was from Carol Griswold. Dear Planning and zoning commission and administration, I appreciate the effort that resulted in this much improved draft. I think AT&amp;T has many valid points to consider. 15 dot 10 dot 250 only refers to commercial communication towers. Will there be other sections dealing with commercial satellite dishes, wireless poles and antennas? Please include page numbers in the future for easier reference. There's a big difference visually between freestanding tower and a pole or antenna attached to an existing building. The ordinance and land uses allowed tables should differentiate these uses to better achieve the goals under 15 dot 10 dot 250A. Change the, changing the use from outright to conditional use permit is a good overall change, but it does not address concerns about impacts of freestanding towers on adjacent residences and businesses and obstructing the view shed. Higher freestanding towers will be more appropriate to less dense RM and industrial zones and institutional away from dense population areas, especially those north of Van Buren Street. The height of poles and antennas attached to existing building should be measured from the ground. Use of existing buildings could be encouraged by allowing higher poles and antennas than the freestanding tower, as noted above. 15 dot 10 dot 250B only refers to towers. I wonder how the 75 foot height was selected. The communication tower on Nash Road is 45.7 high elevation at elevation 30.4, and the tower on Olga Street at Smith is 60.7 at 7.3 elevation. I was unable to find the height of other freestanding towers in city limits, but I doubt they are anywhere near 75 feet high. It seems that much shorter freestanding towers would be more appropriate in ACHC, CB, and institutional zones due to population density and view shed issues. wording in the land use table could be clarified by separating commercial satellite dishes from wireless, towers, poles, and antennas. Punctuation is important. I do not understand why wireless has a semicolon. Note, I hope these dimensions will be reduced and used, and uses separated. Example, communications. Communication satellite dish less than 16 feet in diameter, wireless, towers, poles, and antennas, less than 75 feet in height. Example two, communications, colon, commercial satellite dishes 16 feet in diameter or greater, wireless, towers, poles, and antennas 75 feet in height or greater. Oh, I'm sorry, I was supposed to say the colons and semicolons here.
That's okay.
Okay.
If anyone's interested in a copy of the emails, you can contact the community development department for a copy that we sent to you. Is there any other public comments wishing to be read into the thing? We did get comments from Verizon and AT&amp;T, but we're not gonna read those whole things. We'll go over their input as we go over the ordinance.
Those were the only things that we got emailed.
Okay.
And we do not have any telephone calls asking me.
Dialing?
Dialing.
Okay, thanks. All right. So I will ask for comments from the commission. Anyone wanna start us off on discussion? Are you moving the camera, or are we?
Yeah.
We couldn't leave it where it was, I would prefer. We don't want it to shut off again. Yes, Commissioner Ndoma?
I just have a question, if I could get clarification on the setback for the 1.1, can you just clarify that for me? So if it's a 75-foot tower, does that mean that it would be an 81-feet setback, an 81-foot setback?
Uh, proxim, oh, that would be 1.1, yeah, approximately 80 feet.
Okay.
Because, so the point is that the setback would be equal to the height, so if it were to fall directly flat, it would not land on another property owner's property.
Does that happen? Do they fall?
Yes, they can. I mean, this is, this is so that if eventually happens, then you don't have that problem.
Okay. We did the same height restriction and requirement when we approved the wind generation towers. We use 75 feet, right?
Yeah.
That is, yeah.
Any, any other questions, comments?
Pertaining to the setbacks, we did write in that it would be possible to modify that based on a breaking point, certain breaking point certification also.
Yeah, and I don't think we have that in the wind generation towers, anything about wind.
I don't think we do.
But it is in this communication tower, so it must be something that's a, you know, that does, that happens with these towers, I mean, some of that, so. Yes, Commissioner, ever the eye?
On the land uses table, the first thing, communications, commercial satellite dishes, wireless, sorry, AT&amp;T was one, CUPs on RR through OR. I don't quite understand what, what would be the size of those? What would be, could they impede view sheds? Could they, I'm not sure what a commercial satellite dish, how much different that could be? I mean, are those the 50-foot wide dishes that could be on top of a building? What, what are we, what is in that?
What page are you on?
I'm on 9 of 13.
In their first comment, which comment are you?
Yeah.
The first comment suggests allowing shorter wireless facilities in residential zones, including a basement, to existing structures because in-home need is substantial. See the CDC wireless substitution, state level estimates from the National Health Interview Survey released December 2019. Well, over half of Alaska homes no longer use traditional landline telephone service and intend to instead choose to be wireless only. So I guess that's a question for AT&amp;T. The question you had was on height.
Yeah, size, how much, I mean, if, if my neighbor has a two-story house and they agree to put one of these commercial satellite dishes on the roof of their house, what's the potential of losing view shed or daylight, depending on, I don't know how big these things are?
Eric?
Well, the way we tried to write it was that it would be.
What page are you looking at now?
Let's see here.
On our, on our ordinance?
On our page three, on grade of risk on the ordinance if they're not allowed in residential areas.
Right, right, but what, did we talk about satellite dishes on a building anywhere?
We did not.
Sorry?
We can add that, but what we did do was have the measurement of height from the existing ground level, let me see the wording on that.
Yeah.
Total height, the distance is measured from the ground at the pre-existing natural grade to the topmost point. So we can add that it would be, or.
Rooftop?
From rooftop, but then we would have to have a lower height so that it matched the 75-foot. So if it's a 30-foot building height, then it couldn't be more than.
45 feet.
45 feet.
But it can't fall onto another person's property.
Right, it still would have to meet the setback requirement.
It can't fall on another resident.
Yeah, 'cause I'm pretty much not in favor of it because it seems like it would be, if we were to allow that in all the residential, your OR areas, there could be large satellite dishes all throughout.
Yeah, I'm not in agreement with the change there, change there. Commissioner, Colonel?
I was gonna say the same thing, that if we needed to put a spot in for commercial dishes, that would be fine, but definitely not commercial within R1s areas. Residential's different, but I don't think it was commercial.
Or with a certain height restriction.
But for commercial, not for commercial, I'm not comfortable with commercial stuff going into the R1, 2, and 3. You may already have residential dishes, which are perfectly fine, but it's that, it means.
And I, I'm not sure, Eric, go ahead.
I just wanted to clarify, I know you're not in favor of the residential, and I'm gonna agree with, actually, I'm not sure if I'm supposed to say that. But the, should I add something in here about height or on top, if they were to put it on the top of a building? Should we add a section in there?
Did Keenite have a section in there, on top of buildings?
There, yes, they had a section. There are a couple other places that had a section.
For on top of buildings?
For on top of a building.
I think we're gonna have to address that because we're asking for co-location.
Okay.
So we're gonna have to.
I would like to see things on top of buildings, instead of doing new freestanding stuff.
Right, like the one on APPEK?
Yeah, something like that, so.
So we'll add that regulation in.
We'll add that into.
Yeah.
But that, for the, for the, where it's allowed by conditional use.
Yes, yes.
Okay.
Anyone else on any of this that we, some of it I know is just being read tonight, so hard maybe for the Verizon comments. I did jot some notes down in them. I wanted to ask a question on the AT&amp;T first before I go to the Verizon on page 10 of 13, where all the way down to C1D, yeah, C1D, and their comment number nine. Under federal law, the applicant is not required to show a gap in coverage or capacity, and not quite sure what our original draft said, let me see, uh, C1, C1D. A map showing the locations of the applicant's existing communication towers that serve customers within the city, only towers that the applicant proposes to construct and changes to the applicant's, is that it? And changes to the applicant's existing cellular coverage and capacity within the city. Am I on the right?
Yep, you were on the right side.
Okay, and their suggestions, they're saying that they don't have to show their gap in coverage or capacity. The proposal may provide other service improvements such as introducing new technology, and then they go on, but I under, and maybe administration can correct me here, but I typically am under the impression, and I guess that could be all my own opinion, that if there's a federal or straight state restriction, you can't go less than it, but you can go stricter than it?
Yes, ma'am.
So aren't we just asking for a few stricter measures? We're not getting more lax than the Fed or the state. We're just saying, we wanna know why it has to be where you wanna put it. Where's the gap? Where's their lack of coverage?
Yes, and we have full authority to be able to request those things.
Okay. All right. I had other notes on my iPad, but it's dead by the time I got here. On the Verizon, I'm on page five, and they, the incent tower locations in more intense land use zones, Verizon requests that towers under 75 feet continue to be permitted outright in those zones, permitted with the CUP and all other zones, including residential zones. And, and not in favor of allowing in residential zones. I don't think we wanted to change our, our, the draft ordinance you have. And then on page six, their first comment says, Verizon suggests that the definition from the recent FCC order for stealth facility be used here to avoid confusion. So my question to Verizon is, is that the definition that you have added here, stealth facility, I'm not quite sure what your.
Yes.
Addition was. Facility designed to make the structure look like something other than a wireless facility, that's the FCC definition?
Yeah, that's, that's the definition from, from the newest ruling from, from the FCC, yes.
Okay, I'm, I'm okay with that change of, I mean, if it's consistent with the FCC. I think that's the only ones I got to on there. Anyone else find something? So where we're at in the process of this is, if we get a draft for us, it will come back to the planning commission, so it could include the changes that we just asked for the adding it on top of the building. We don't have to have another work session on it. Anything we add or delete tonight can come to us at that, where we approve by resolution the ordinance to go forward to council. So there'll be a public hearing at the P&amp;Z, and then it'll go to council for introduction, which you could comment on it at that meeting in public comments, other than those appearing for a public hearing. And then it has a public hearing at its second meeting. So there's plenty of opportunity for anyone else to make comment on this, and as they see it in a better, clearer written form with what dates it's gonna be read and everything, I think that will be helpful. So I'm gonna ask if there's anyone online that wanted to make comment. Wait, first, I'm gonna ask the person in the audience, since they came. Thank you. Did you have any comments to make tonight?
First of all, Tom Gielbrecht, so I'm on the HP Commission, so part of my intent of being here is just to work together with you. We've talked about having some future work sessions, we're all working towards the same things. I'm owner of two historic properties here in town, including the Cable House, which is just about next door, and the house next door to that, so 1913 and 1905 house. I'm just trying to educate myself and to learn what's there, and that we're all in the best interest of Seward, trying to develop responsibly, and at the same time, obviously, I have an interest from a cultural heritage standpoint as well, too. So I'm really here just to listen and to educate myself. I don't think I'm qualified at this point to make a lot of great comments, other than to tell you that I obviously have concerns, too, about view shed and views and things like that. Once, once structures become heated by whatever it is that might be built, there's kind of no going back, right? So, but I don't know enough, so I'm just here to educate myself, and I appreciate you allowing me to be here, and we hope as a historic commission that we're able to be supportive and be part of the process as well. So just here to learn.
So I do have a question. One of your houses is a rental property, right?
Correct, both are rental.
Both are rental.
As well.
Have you had, you've had them a couple of years?
I've had one for 12 years, I'm sure.
Have you had many complaints by visitors about their ability to use their cells, self technology?
We have, in fact, yeah, that is something that, that is something that, that's a thing. Of course, I have my own cells, too, so that is a concern, and we know that there's a need to, and you know, just as, just as much as we're saying that there needs to be an economic need to have people come here and spend time to see our restaurants and our sites and everything else, and to stay here as long as they can, and to bring, to bring some money to the economy. We know that we have to be viable as well, too, from like cellphone perspective and technology and everything else as well, too. I will say on the flip side that I have every kind of technology you could imagine in our houses for people, and half the time they don't even turn on the TV. I don't know how much time they spend on their cellphone, but they come here to see the site, so. That said, in order to be able to do business in Seward, we have to have a reliable cell service as well, too, so that's a toss-up. But yeah, we do get some, some concerns. I know a little bit about telecommunications, not a lot, and know that Verizon piggybacks off of GCI systems, so I know that they're looking to develop what they're doing as well, too. But I'm not a telecommunications expert, so I'm here to learn. That is a complaint, an answer to your question is a complaint that we sometimes get in both, both of our houses, and we do do rentals there as well. I've been doing it for a long time.
All right. AT&amp;T and Verizon, I'm gonna give you an opportunity to discuss this ordinance, so I'll ask someone from AT&amp;T to go first, please.
Yes, this is, oops, sorry about that. Yes, this is Verity Papst, on behalf of AT&amp;T, and I would just like to start with responding to the commissioner's question about our comment number nine. And I think that's on page 10 of the packet, at least in the PDF.
Yes, here it is.
Yeah. And also on the phone, you, you heard Sean Ushman from AT&amp;T introduce himself, and Ken Lyons has also joined.
Okay.
He's my colleague.
All right.
So this particular comment is responding to a submittal requirement requiring that an applicant provide maps that show a significant gap in coverage or capacity. And our comment in response is that under the federal law, an applicant is not required to show a gap in order to justify the site. And this is based on a declaratory ruling that was released in 2018. And then if you look back at the root of this in federal law, it's based on the 1996 Telecom Act, under which the federal law reserves zoning authority to state and local jurisdictions, but there's a number of carve-outs of that, and under each of those carve-outs, there is some presumption, preemption of local authority. And the one that's applicable here is a provision that says local regulation may not prohibit or have the effect of prohibiting the provision of wireless service.
And that, that would not be our intention, but, yeah.
Pardon me?
I said, that's not our intention is to prohibit.
Right, right. And, and then there, since 1996, there've been a series of court cases and other decisions that, that came up with rules and tests and definitions for deciding whether a local regulation had the effect of prohibiting wireless service. At one point in time, in, in this circuit of the federal court system, it was a significant gap rule, and local jurisdictions were free to require an applicant to show a significant gap, but this most recent ruling says that the applicant has the opportunity to show other reasons why the service is needed. And so that's why we offered these clarifications, to say the applicant might have a narrative description of the purpose and need, the applicant might be adding new technology, adding capacity improvements that don't show on a map at all. And so that's why we're suggesting these clarifications here.
I, I'm gonna request that we have our attorney specifically review that section, since the, the comment's already been made by administration that this ordinance can forward with our counsel, our legal counsel review, so, but we'll ask them to look at that specifically. Anything else?
Yeah, and we'd be happy, happy to discuss it with your legal counsel as well.
Probably not to, we don't, we, we don't allow that because it's an increased cost, and our attorneys are charging the city for you to discuss with them, so we'll, we'll get back to you on what our attorneys give us back. Thanks.
Okay.
But what else do you have?
And I would like, I would like to provide some additional comment and background, basically in two areas. One is the use table, which you've already discussed some today, and then also the setback requirements, which you've also discussed.
Okay.
On the use table and the definition, we've made a number of suggestions to clarify the descriptions of the uses, and then to have some variation in how those different types of facilities are allowed throughout the city. So for instance, we're suggesting that in residential zones, that the city consider allowing, say, rooftop installations on churches, schools, other, you know, quasi-public sort of structures are commonly used for wireless facilities on rooftops in order to get close to the homes where people need in-building coverage now. We're also suggesting that you keep the outright permission of the shorter towers in your industrial RM and INS zones, and to distinguish those from the taller towers for which you require a conditional use permit. In those zones, this provides an incentive for carriers to locate in those more intense zones.
But that's not where the houses are, Mary. Is there, is there also a higher demand in institutional resource management in industrial? Because you just said the higher use was in the residential areas.
The higher use could be anywhere in the city, and due to people traveling to work, and due to people visiting different areas in the city. And our suggestions are intended to be global suggestions for how the city can accommodate wireless facilities in a way to serve the whole community. And it's based on a system of incentives that we've seen in numerous other jurisdictions, where the community looks at, you know, where's the more intense zone? I might encourage a taller tower there in the event that service can be provided there. In, say, more sensitive areas, the community might say, well, I'm gonna require a conditional use permit there. I may only require something of a shorter height there. I may want carriers to provide rooftops on buildings instead of a tower. So we're recommending these changes as a package for how to better serve the city.
Okay. Are you familiar with our zoning map?
Yes, I have taken a look at your zoning map.
Okay. We're, we're kind of have central business, harbor commercial, auto commercial, OR, throughout the whole town, near our residential areas, so, but go ahead, what's your next point to discuss?
Yeah, it, it did look to me to say to the northwest that there was a significant residential area, maybe some parks there, and it looked to me that might be an area where there, you know, there may be need for a facility.
North what? North, what, out by the dump? Are we, is that the forest acres already?
West would be first.
And there's a resource management, like a lot of resource management there?
Yeah.
Okay. All right. And...
And then...
Go ahead.
All right. The other item that we wanted to talk about is the, the proposed setbacks. And we have, and that's on page, I think 12 of the PDF, subsection C. And we have suggested two additional exceptions or options under this particular subsection based on our experience in other communities to allow some flexibility here. The first is to measure the tower height from an off-site residence rather than from the shared property line. And in this instance, the provision gets more directly, you know, assuming a safety concern, gets more directly at the issue, with still allowing some more flexibility for citing a tower on a parcel. The second suggested addition would allow some flexibility if the site offered better screening on a different location on the site.
You have a question in your 14th comment?
Yes.
Does the city require structural height setbacks and other construction? And you were privy to the comments earlier regarding our wind generation towers, that we have the one-to-one setback on those as well?
What, what zones does the city permit the wind generation towers?
All of them. All of them.
So, they're permitted in all of them? Okay. And, yes, that was one of our questions. In particular, AT&amp;T is concerned about how this setback requirement may be applied in the downtown area, where, you know, we have seen from the maps and understand that parcel size is very small and, and a provision such as this could potentially exclude towers from being sighted in that area. So, we were interested in comparing it not only to the, the wind towers, but, you know, utility poles downtown, you know, what's the typical height of a utility pole downtown? Are there other uses permitted that, that are this restrictive? And what other flexibility we, we might be able to have here? Again, this kind of goes back to my point about the federal limitation on local authority. You know, there, there's latitude to adopt local regulations, but they may not prohibit, prohibit the provision of wireless service.
Okay.
So, AT&amp;T is, is interested in finding something feasible for delivering service downtown.
Were you on the last work session call that we had where we discussed putting towers higher up on the mountain side, which is resource management, or up near the hospital, which is institutional? So, we're not, we're not stopping cell service or additional service, we're just being very selective on our view shed, which is in our comp plan, and, and trying to work with you to find the optimum area. There's residential all along there, and if you aimed it in the right direction, you can cover the whole town from up on the bench and it's city property and it's resource management.
Yeah, and I wasn't at that meeting, but my colleague Ken was, and he can follow up on that.
Great.
Yeah, this is Ken Lyons for AT&amp;T. It's nice to talk with you again, thanks for the opportunity to speak. I, I think I also communicated though at that meeting that, you know, the days of being able to beam in signal from outside of the area that's where the, where the traffic is effectively being generated, is, you know, we're kind of beyond that stage of, of wireless deployment. We really do need a facility in downtown to serve downtown. And I, I thought that that was something that I know that we spoke about at that last planning commission meeting, and I think that's the concern that we have is, you know, you can have these setback requirements, but if they, if it constructively prohibits any sort of tower in downtown because the lot sizes are not such that, that those setback requirements could ever be, you know, realistically met, then that's an effective prohibition, you know, in terms of saying you really can't locate there because the code, you know, effectively doesn't, or constructively, I should say, doesn't allow it. So, I think that's the, probably one of the big questions and concerns that we have is, you know, how do we feasibly provide, you know, a service in this area as required? And that's a concern we have about being able to beam in from the outside.
Commissioner Hatfield?
I have a question for Ken. What is the typical height of a cell tower that you would put up in, like, say, our downtown area? Like, do you need all 75 feet?
Well, I think, I think part of that depends on what the city's trying to encourage. If you want one tower that has multiple carriers on it, then it's not just looking at who's at the top of the tower, it's also about who's going to be also placed on the tower. Generally speaking, the more the co-location that you require, the taller that the height of the tower needs to be to accommodate multiple users. I think generally speaking, you know, 65 to 75 feet is, is, is probably appropriate for downtown areas, and in some cases we're, we're taller than that, but, you know, it's part of it depends on topography and it depends on really how close the buildings are and how tall the buildings are, things like that. But I do think that if you build a 65 to 75 foot tall tower, that means that the second person who goes on the tower is likely going to be at 50 to, you know, 55 feet. So, I, I think that's really the challenge. The more you encourage co-location, you know, it's actually encouraging taller towers to, to make sure that there's space to accommodate multiple users without having the, the need of, of building multiple towers. Some communities do take the position, they prefer the towers be lower and, but what that means is that you really can't co-locate, you know, you, you get, instead of one, you know, 75 foot tower, you know, or 80 foot tower, you get, you know, two 60 foot towers, you know, so there's, there's a trade-off in terms of, you know, what, what the city's trying to encourage.
Commissioner Demoss?
I guess you just kind of covered that. I was going to ask if, how small are your, can your towers be? And if we did, you know, three small towers instead of one large tower, is that an option? Is that the same type of coverage?
Well, there, there comes a point where the tower, I'm sorry, was that question for me?
Yes, yes, I'm sorry, thank you. Yeah, I'm looking for like a minimum tower, height.
Yeah, I mean, there, there comes a point where the tower's so short, it doesn't actually provide any meaningful benefit. If you build a tower 30 feet tall or 35 foot tall, then, you know, you're, you're awfully close to the ground, you're not actually providing much geographic coverage. So, as I was stating before, really 60 to 75 feet is generally what you find these towers at, at a minimum height. And certainly in these downtown areas, you know, I, I think certainly that, that can be accomplished, but if it's shorter than that, you know, it may not, it's not necessarily that you can just build three or four of them.
Right.
Obviously, these things are quite expensive, but it also just means that there's gaps between those towers that now you have to fill and you're not actually providing the sort of continuous coverage benefit that a customer certainly would, would expect.
Sure, thank you.
Ken, I, I have a follow-up on the downtown area where you evidently are, are really looking to putting a tower. And then the suggestion that instead of it being, it has to be within the lot that it's placed on, your suggestion that it would be within the off-site residence, it couldn't get hit on anybody else's house primarily is what you're saying, I think, anybody else's building. Where in downtown is there a lot that would be a 65 foot tower go on that it wouldn't hit another building?
Well, I think, I think that that's actually part of our point, is whether or not these regulations constructively prohibit, you know, facilities in downtown. You know, it's not that there's a structural concern. I mean, I, I know that we've seen some regulations from some, you know, more perhaps rural or type of counties or borough type of communities where they've got, you know, this one-to-one setback, you know, one-to-one height setback. But generally in downtown areas, you don't see setbacks like this, you know, for the very same reason you described, you know, that if you, you know, the lot sizes are so small that you constructively can't build a 65 to 75 foot tower because the property lines are not, are not, you know, the lot sizes aren't big enough and the, the structures are close together that, you know, it may not actually be something that they're... From a structural perspective, you can certainly build a very beefy, you know, tower, you've got, you know, certainly towers in downtown today, they're not, they're not structurally able to support, you know, AT&amp;T's facility at this time because they, you know, they weren't built with those in mind. But, you know, you can certainly build a tower such that the setback, and perhaps the, the fear, if you will, that it's somehow going to fall down, you know, could be addressed. You know, that's why that doesn't, that doesn't occur. I'm not aware that, you know, there's a threat of towers falling in the, in the community.
Are you going to provide insurance to every homeowner, building owner within the reach of a tower? I mean, we can't change the size of the original townsite lots, they're 30 by 100. Somebody can buy three lots and have 90 by 100, or try to find six lots and have 180 by 100. But I, my question is, even if you tried to build a 65 foot tower in downtown Seward, what lot would it not hit a building if it fell over? And I understand the rarity of a tower falling over, but I, I'm thinking of our, our main objective for health, welfare, public safety to our citizens, and, and we're going to have them going, whoa, wait a minute, that's going to hit my house. How, I, I don't know where that lot would be in downtown Seward. Have you? I mean, you would have to tell me the specific lot, but you, you must know if it's doable or not.
Well, it's important to recognize that the constraints related to setback were not, are not in the current code today. So, you know, the, the concern is, is built upon basically new language that's being, you know, proposed. There are existing towers certainly downtown that are right on top of existing property lines. And of course, they're older and they've been there for quite a while. But, you know, this is an area of need and I think that's the concern is that, you know, we, we want to work constructively with the city to find an appropriate location and look at stealthing or screening or ways of doing that, but, you know, to have a situation where we can't build a facility at all because the regulations are written in such a way that they could never be met in a, in a certain area, that, that's the concern about whether or not it really is a effective prohibition.
And can I just, I want to answer a question before we go any further. When we're talking about how we have wind generation towers and the discussion of the height of a power pole, just as a reference to the commission, we do have it in our comprehensive plan and has been discussed and approved over the last 10 years to take our power lines because of view shed and put them underground. So, it is something that the city has and its citizens have over the last 10, 15 years have been really working towards. So, it's just something that I want to put out there for all the applicants, there are all the people that are on the telephone, but also because we have new commissioners. It isn't something that we're just saying, it's a cellphone tower, we're going to do this. We have looked at all the other options and other view shed issues in the community.
Commissioner Demoss, you have an additional question?
I guess I was going back to safety on the towers, you know, even, I guess you refer to it as a rarity that a tower would fall, but how often does that happen and has that happened and what happened?
And that's a question.
Ken, thank you.
A question for Verizon and AT&amp;T.
Yeah, to Verizon and AT&amp;T, if either companies have had experience with that, I guess.
Or know of any company that's had, rattled over.
Hi, this is Ken. I, I'm not aware of any, I, I think I may have heard of some towers that maybe were built in the 60s somewhere that may have, but I, I don't even know if they were wireless towers or not, but I don't know if anybody at Verizon knows of any.
Yeah, this is, this is Kim Allen from Verizon, and, and I'm not aware of any, any towers, certainly in recent years, that have, that have fallen, certainly not fallen their full length. You know, your, your ordinance provides for recognition of breakpoint technology, which, which we, we applaud because it's often used, but to understand what breakpoint technology does, when they engineer the breakpoint, it isn't that the top, from the top to the breakpoint falls over and falls up, it's engineered to pull over on itself and drop to the ground.
Wow.
So, so in looking at the, the setbacks that are proposed, Verizon shares the same concern that AT&amp;T has, has talked about, and I think that, that in meeting the, you know, the downtown lot line issue, if, if the, the ordinance were adjusted to read that the setback was measured from the structure to the breakpoint of the tower, there might be some more feasible locations. In combining breakpoint technology with the setbacks being measured from, from habitable structures, it at least allows more flexibility where we could conceivably look for a tower. But I'm not aware of any that have fallen their full length, certainly not, not as long as I've been in, in this business.
Okay.
Do you?
Yeah, if I could just add one more comment on, on, especially if we make these towers of, you know, that look like a, looks like a tree, like a monopine as we refer to them, you know, things like that, those are really beefy towers. And of course, they, you know, they, they have the branches that are attached to them and things like that, but, you know, these towers are all built to the strongest standards, you know, we, you know, there's a lot of improvements in structural codes over the years, so, you know, they, they're certainly a lot, lot stronger than, you know, towers even were built 10 years ago, so.
Okay. Commissioner Hatfield?
I think partly it was answered about the breakpoint technology, but my concern really in Alaska is the earthquakes.
And tsunamis.
And tsunamis, and those are like more of the things I think we've had experience in Seward in the past, and that's more of where I'm concerned with like the safety aspect of it. I don't think we're in just any town that where cellphone towers are just going to fall over on their own, but we do get really strong earthquakes that would be a concern for me.
And the towers would have to be, have to be engineered to meet those earthquake standards that you have in your building code.
Okay. Planners, basically?
Yeah, I've got a concern too, just as a, as a resident downtown property owner, that if you were measuring potential towers based on where present structures are located, it would impact future development in the vicinity of that tower and possibly like decrease the value of land nearby that tower because I might not want to build my thing over closer to the tower.
If there was an empty lot between the tower and someone's residence, they would justify it falling on the empty lot because of the suggested derailment? Okay.
Yeah, if I, if I could just comment, I think, you know, I, I don't think we see, generally speaking, these type of setback requirements really imposed in downtown type of areas. You see a lot, certainly a lot of communities, you see, certainly more of the dense, more dense commercial core of a, of a city, you tend to not have setbacks for towers like this as, as perhaps you might would, would in a residential area or the, or the like. So, it, I think that's, you know, getting back to probably the size, but, you know, whether or not it impacts future development, you know, that also speaks to, you know, how feasible is it to, to have these types of setback requirements, so.
Did you have a question? I, I have a question, which is to our historic areas in Seward. Have you gotten permission to build towers in other communities' historic districts?
Yeah, so, I, I don't know if anyone else wants to take this, but, so we, whenever we build a site, we have to go through the full process. So, the city's process would just be one of many types of compliance processes we would have to go through. One is we have to go through a NEPA process, that includes also the consults with SHPO as well as any sort of recognized historic districts and the like. Typically, we, it, it's good to engage those groups early just to try to understand some of the constraints, and I think there's been discussions about P Sheds and, you know, and I think sometimes through that consultation process, there, you know, maybe instead of having a lattice tower, you do a, you know, a monopole or some sort of monopine or, you know, there's ways of doing it. I think as Mary DePapst suggested before... I think as Mary Dehead suggested before, you know, how we place something on a site, if you're only looking at setbacks, well, you know, that may put the tower right smack in the middle of the property where it's much more visible than if you put it on the side next to the three or four trees that are right there. I mean, a monopine looks a lot better next to three or four trees than that middle of an open parking lot. You know, but these are the types of considerations we, we, we go through, and there's, the zoning process that the city of Seward would have would just be one of the other processes we would have to go through, with certainly the federal and state processes.
Okay. And this is the zoning process for the city of Seward? I mean, this is where, where we're allowing your input into our rewrite or our, our writing of an ordinance on the specific kinds of things worth you want to do here, which we hadn't addressed, which we have been tasked with by our council for the last 10 years, I believe, that we needed to get industry, industry experts to help us. So I really appreciate that you're here to try to help us, but we also, our first duty is to our citizens and, and the comments they've forwarded to us.
If I, if I could just say, you know, sometimes there are conflicts that do come up between like the local, local zoning process, the city's zoning process and the state. A, a good example would be like a rooftop facility on a historic building. Many cities would say, on that rooftop, we want you to put a full screen around it so you can't see the antennas, whereas the, the state Historic Preservation Office may say, no, we don't want screening around those antennas, because the more screening, you're adding more visual mass to the building. I, I was just suggesting that there's, there's in addition to complying with all of the city's requirements and all the things that, that you would require, there's also another layer of, of review from different types of disciplines and stakeholders that, that also have to review facilities, at least before we can actually build a facility, so.
Okay. I think that Verizon did, did chime in on one aspect, but Verizon, do you have specific points in the draft ordinance that you wanted to touch on?
Well, we certainly concur with AT&amp;T's position on the exclusion from residential areas. Now, we look to, typically if we're going to, we can't serve the area from outside the residential zone, we'll look to, to non, non-residential uses in those zones, like, like school parking lots, like, like church steeples, uses, you know, lots that have uses like that, that we can, where we can accommodate the, the network needs that we have to serve the residential neighborhood, and, and then also use stealth and, and camouflage to, to make it blend in, so that it's not an eyesore there. But I, I also concur with AT&amp;T's assertion that, that we do need towers that are closer to residential. The, the big towers on the hill, what we, we call them boomer sites, gave a decent base layer of ability to place a phone call back in the day, but with the, the expensive use of data, especially in residential neighborhoods. Now, you need shorter towers to infill that capacity, and, and they can't be very, very, you know, very precise because they interfere with each other. So we do need to get closer to residential, we're willing to work with the city to design something that, that fits in the neighborhood. There are some excellent manufacturers of stealth technology now that, that I, that I've recently seen, church steeples or bell towers or windmills, I mean, all sorts of different, you know, different choices, in addition to basically almost every type of vegetation you can imagine. So, so the absolute exclusion from residential is a, is a big concern for Verizon, and we would just like to have, in the event that we can demonstrate that it's not technically feasible to serve those residential areas from outside, that we at least have a conditional use process that's available, so that we can demonstrate that to you and work, you know, with conditions imposed by the, by the city to, to make sure that the facility is, is compatible with the surrounding neighborhood. So, so I think that's, that's the point, not, we're setting for not, that outright prohibition be removed, and that there be a path forward with a very high bar to be able to serve those neighborhoods. And then again, our other main concern was the, the setback requirements in, in, certainly in the downtown, which I think that if you are measuring from, from a structure and you're using the breakpoint technology point as the, as the one-to-one, I think it, it might be feasible to be able to get, again, a supporting tower that is, that is stealth to resemble something else that would be compatible with the area that it's in. You know, Verizon doesn't object to being required to make it, make it blend in and fit in, you know, works handily with the city to make sure that happens, but it's the absolute prohibition in some of these areas, or the effective prohibition, which is what this setback sets up, that is, that is prohibited by federal law, and, and that we would like to try to, try to work with the city on a solution for that. So those are the main areas of concern that we have.
Thank you. Commissioner Demas?
Yes, this is a question for either Verizon or AT&amp;T. What is the average breakpoint height on, say, a 65-foot tower?
Well, I've seen them at 30.
So what's the half?
30 feet from top of structure.
Okay.
Oh, thank you. Go ahead, Ken.
This is Ken for AT&amp;T. I think it could be engineered anywhere on the pole. Basically, what it really is, is you're over-engineering the pole, and then you have one point where it's not over-engineered, and that's where the breakpoint actually is. And it can go, it can go, you know, higher on the tower, above 30 feet, but it's, you know, I, I know some of the questions I have, and some of the things I think I'm still reaching, is how breakpoint works with, like, monopines or other type of stealth structures. Those are things that we're researching as well, to, to make sure we're able to provide meaningful feedback on the code, so.
Okay, it might be something.
Typically, what happens is the breakpoint is engineered below the first antenna array on the top, so, because that's where the wind load is, that's where, that's where the, once that load folds over and, and drops to the ground, the rest of the tower structure is engineered, you know, over-engineered, as Ken said, and typically that portion would not fall, it's just the, you know, the part that attracts the wind load that would be of concern. So that, that, those are the observations that I've had in, in other sites that I've worked on.
Okay, well, that, that brings up another concern, besides earthquake, tsunamis, we do have typically up to 98 mile an hour winds in Seward I've seen, so. But my other comment on the whole zoning thing is, the city of Seward, from down on the waterfront at the Alaska Sea Life Center, at the bottom of Main Street, is Central Business District. It goes up the hill in a three, four-block wide path. It's got auto-commercial past that, it's got harbor-commercial past that, it's got auto-commercial out the road, we have institutional at the hospital, we have institutional at AVTEC, we have institutional at the city buildings, we have institutional where the city shop is, we have institutional where the schools are, I believe the Army Rep Camp is still, no, what is that?
It's auto-commercial.
It's auto-commercial, and then there's Resource Management past Forest Acres, there's auto-commercial on the highway. I don't really see any area where we have said that we're going to allow these, that you are not near a residential area. I don't think you can really get farther than a half a mile from a residential area in the city of Seward. Now, out the road, out of Mile 7 or something, but that's not what we're, you know, what we are zoning. We zone within the city limits, and I can't see with the places that we're allowing with the conditional use permit, so that we can get our public input, because that's who we work for, where you would be very far from residences.
Well, I think, this is Kim from Verizon, I think in the event that, that we could site in one of those zones that you, that you, that you just indicated, and, and effectively serve the residential neighborhood, certainly we would, you know, we would want to do that.
Right.
You know, citing a residential zone is, is definitely more difficult and requires higher, higher levels of stealth, but there are circumstances where that's just not feasible. A half mile for some of the capacity solutions that are required is, is a very, is much larger than the area that we're looking at, the search, where the search ring would be. So, so all, all we're asking for is just a path forward. You can make it as strenuous a review as, as you wish, but when there's an absolute prohibition, and we can demonstrate there's technically no feasible other place that we can go, that's where you start to butt up against the federal preemption there. So, and that's all we're asking for, is just some path forward in the event that we can demonstrate to the city that it, that it's just not technically feasible to meet the, the coverage and capacity objective, serve that residential area from outside the zone.
Great, and, and that would be wonderful if we could see some of those capacity needs and, and how far they are from these zones that we are allowing them in with our public input. This is not to impede, it's to allow, the conditional use permit is a process to allow our public an opportunity to speak towards it, because it requires a public hearing. Eric?
We, we can maintain the, the zero permission in the residential area, but then add a clause or a variance process if no other alternatives are available.
That would meet what they're saying, we would be impeding, so if the commission's okay with a review of that variance component, please bring it to our meeting where we have our first public hearing on this, along with any of the other changes that the commission has asked for. So, yeah, I, I, I would, having lived, yeah, go ahead, Commissioner Hatfield.
You can finish.
No, having lived here four years and seeing the development in the town, I can't see where the capacity need would be so great outside of the areas that we have set in our draft ordinance. I, I, and so if you, if you know of a section of town that has a greater capacity that you are farther than a half a mile from, I'd be, I'd be happy to hear that spot. So, once you see our ordinance and come to our next public hearing, I hope you'll have that information for us. Commissioner Hatfield?
You kind of just stated what I said too. I was wondering what the capacity needs were, if we're talking about the days when the cruise ships come in with 4,000 passengers, where nobody can use their cell phone very well, versus the 3,000 people who live in Seward year-round trying to use their cell phone, which I have no problem with, and I just plan around the cruise ships being in town for five or six hours, and that's fine. I'm curious, like, what capacity you're working with? Are you working with the city of Seward's capacity, or are you working with Mount Marathon Fourth of July, when you have 30,000 people in town? Like, I don't know that we need to build a cell phone, cell phone tower for the capacity for one day out of the year to cover that need, so it'd be interesting to see, like, what exact capacity you're working with.
Do you have that information tonight, available either at AT&amp;T or Verizon, or is it something you could, I mean, granted, if you're going to ask for it somewhere outside of these, you, we would like to know?
Yeah, so this is Ken, and can you guys hear me okay?
Yes, we can. Thanks, Ken.
Okay, sorry, I thought I might have been on mute. Yeah, I, you know, the only, I mean, I think I might have mentioned this even in the last meeting we were in, all right, you know, it, it's not like the population of Seward's growing by, you know, 5,000% per year, you know, but we, you know, the concern is that, you know, we've had 580,000% growth in data usage since 2007, and on a year-to-year basis, you're talking about the network having to handle many more times the capacity that we had to the year before, and it keeps growing at an exponential pace, not because there's more people, but because people are using more, more of the service and they're moving, using more gigabytes, you know, than they, you know, than they did the previous year, and it continues to grow like that. So, yeah, they, there are significant needs, and even if, I know that even those major events, yeah, you know, certainly we're trying to design a system that can handle all of those events, but it's still a year-round issue to be able to have these types of services and have the quality, reliable service that we're looking for. And we do see it as an actual, as a very significant public safety issue, if there, if the network is congested and calls are not getting through, these are the, these are the types of issues that we have to, we, we can't have our network fail, not when 60% of residents are relying on their mobile phones for their primary means of communication. So, these are the type of technical challenges we're trying to address, where certainly, you know, we, we want to work to try to find what's the most sensitive and most sensible way we can locate new facilities. You know, we certainly don't want to, you know, locate residential zones, certainly if we can find another alternative that is, is outside of there, but these are real challenges, these are real needs that we're trying to address. AT&amp;T doesn't build new towers that it doesn't need. These are, these are things that try to address, you know, the, the capacity challenges that are growing every year.
So, Ken, before Verizon chimes in, is, can you name a high-capacity zone? Is it the school zone? Is it the railroad dock zone? Can anybody that's on the phone from these two companies name a high-capacity zone in town?
You mean a zoning district or zone, in terms of like, specific uses?
An area of town, not, not a zone of town, but an area of town. If you, I've asked at the last meeting who had been to Seward, and, you know, we, we have the high school, the middle school, and the elementary school, or a campus, they're all close to each other. Yes, they've used a lot more technology in the last year with COVID-19, and they're going to use more. Is that a capacity area? Is that one of the areas that you're trying to meet the need of? Is the cruise ship dock a capacity area? If you could just pinpoint some area, then, then we can be more helpful.
Yeah, I mean, I think we've, we've already stated, I think, that we view a very significant capacity challenge as being downtown. All those uses that you mentioned are high-capacity uses. Some are transient, as you mentioned, like, like cruise ships or things like that, but, you know, we've already identified, and our engineers have already identified, as we've, you know, as we've stated before, a very significant capacity challenge downtown. To get into the fine points about, well, who exactly is using it or not, I, I don't know if I could prepare that for tonight, and we might be able at a future meeting, but, you know, we obviously can't share any sort of individual usage statistics, you know, of any particular customers, but.
Well, I, I mean, the public school system is the public school system, the, the railroad dock is railroad industry, but I, I mean, if you're saying downtown, then that's primarily in the zones that we are asking, you know, we're not prohibiting, it's, we're making conditional use permits, so that based on our residents' input about having a say when these come in their neighborhoods, there's auto-commercial, Central Business District, and institutional, or all downtown. So, I think we've covered the downtown area, and we'll be bringing this draft back. Is there any more comments from the commission? Any from the public? No? Okay, well, I'm sure that the Community Development Department will send the next draft off to both your companies, and our attorneys will review the suggestions you've made and the suggestions we've made, and we'll go from there at our meeting that's brought forward, which we don't have a date for yet. Do we?
Mountain Chair, we will be bringing forward a draft at the September 1st meeting.
September 1st meeting. It's, is that the date of it? The first? Okay.
For the P&amp;Z Commission, September 1st, and we will include AT&amp;T and Verizon and anybody else that would like a copy to the, of the packet.
Great, all right. So unless there's any closing comments or questions from the commission, we're going to call this work session done. Thanks. Thank you, Alon.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.